All right, great. Well, welcome to the planning board meeting on December 16th, 2021. We do have several items to go over this evening. Old business is going to be started first. It's our first hour, which has to do with commercial development review ordinance amendments. And then following that, we'll get into new business, which will include Mr. Hudson, your application. So it'll be one hour before we get there. Okay, certainly. So just start off with, we were starting to talk about the the commercial development review ordinance amendments. Did, see, Steve, you sent some comments. I'd like to make sure to ask the board, is it okay that we talk, bring Steve's comments in at this time?
Personally, I think it's okay. And my thinking is we're, well, let me say as long as it's okay and not out of some kind of legal issue that, and I don't think it is. I think we ought to listen to Steve. We ought to know what he's thinking and be able to understand it before we really go into dealing with the ordinance rather than us talking about something and then having another thought to the thing come in afterward.
You know, I'm perfectly fine with it as well, as long as, you know, we have a level playing field so that if somebody else comes to us and wants to present some information, we provide them with equal opportunity.
Yeah.
Whether it's somebody that's opposed to solar farms or pro-solar farm, whatever, it doesn't matter.
Right, right. Treating each person with a fair opportunity is the most important thing. Craig, you okay about bringing these comments in?
I was just gonna say the same thing as George, as far as, and any other point anybody else wants to chime in.
Perfect. Okay, thank you all. So, yeah, let's go to it. So would you like to just give us your thoughts?
Yeah, well, let me start off by saying that one of the reasons I decided to submit the comments was because I had read that the gentleman from the Reed Field Planning Board was going to possibly comment, provide some commentary at the next meeting is what I understood. Is that, is that what you wrote?
Well, potentially, he's offered to come and share what he knows about solar farms with the planning board.
Yeah, okay. So that's, that was sort of the genesis of, you know, why I decided to put this together. Because after looking at the Reed Field ordinance, I feel that it's it's a radical departure, as I said, from what other towns have done. And you don't have to dig too deeply to figure out that it would make any development, a solar farm, very difficult if not possible to develop. Yeah, so I'm skipping, yeah, I'm skipping through a couple of kind of housekeeping items here. Maybe I should just address those first. It's, I mentioned this in a letter back in June as well. The commercial development ordinance, paragraph 4.1, allows a one-year extension of a permit that's been issued. But it says something to the effect that any additional, there's no, there's no opportunity for additional extensions, basically. If you have to resubmit the permit application. And, you know, given the fact that you people have quite a bit on your agenda as it is, and the fact that, well, if you've approved it and nothing has changed except that it's not ready to be constructed, then why do you need to go through a whole permit application? But that, that's up for you to decide. I just wanted to mention that as a possible.
Can I just add something in that, you know, solar farm is a little, a little more complicated than a lot of other commercial development. You know, there's so many, it requires an interconnection agreement from CMP, it requires a contract from the PUC. So if there's so many moving pieces that it's a lot more complicated and time-consuming.
Yeah, as I know here in my letter, solar fields has not been issued an interconnection agreement by Central Main Power Company as of now, even though we applied almost two years ago, so. That's really the main issue, the tolling this. Yes, yes.
Steve, how long did the PUC bidding process, how much time did that consume?
Well, they ran a bid in the summer. Or that was when the bids were evaluated, the winners were chosen, I should say. The bids were due in early spring, so it's like three or four months.
So nothing compared to the CMP?
No.
Part of the.
No, and I think I communicated at some point that the power project was put on the shortlist for a contract by the Public Utilities Commission, but was not eventually chosen as the final contractor awardee. And even though they, they don't tell you, you know, why they did it. There are a lot of factors that go into their decision to who's awarded the contract. But I believe that the primary reason we want to award the contract is we don't have an interconnection group of the Central Main Power Company yet. I'm hoping it will come soon if it's formed. Number two on my list was the decommissioning, which I know the board has been looking at. And we did a review of some of the other solar ordinances in other towns around the area and elsewhere in Maine. And in doing that, I took a look at the Oakland ordinance right next door. And they have a particularly useful set of provisions in their decommissioning language that I hope that the board could look at when making their, you know, I'm looking at what actual language would be included in the decommission in Belgrade. Number three on my list was that if any process requiring decommissioning, I believe should include a review and discussion between the planning board and the facility owner prior to issuing a decommissioning order. You know, it shouldn't be like, it should be a conversation, not a, not a dictate, you know, okay, you're closed down, you know. That's, I think, reasonable in most processes. Then the fourth item is the Reed Field ordinance. And I talk about four things in that ordinance, which I believe are particularly objectionable. The first one is that the height of the solar equipment is limited to 10 feet in the Reed Field ordinance. Much of the equipment that's installed is 12 feet in height or just above that height and more. And then there are other options to go even taller, 15 feet. There are options to lay them flatter to get under the 10 feet. But that really does compromise energy production at the facility during the winter when snow piles up. The less the angle of the collectors, the more that's just going to accumulate. So I feel, in our review of a half a dozen other towns, we have solar ordinances. All of them were at least 20 feet minimum, if there was a restriction, not 10 feet. So that's why I recommended 20 feet.
Steve, most of these solar farms, you certainly see enough of them around now.
Yeah.
Being built and whatever, but when they do the, you know, the individual what size their panels.
Yeah.
Do, do most of them have the ability, or do they pretty much sit at that position? Or do most of them have an ability to be moved depending on
Right.
the time of the year or something like that?
Most of them are what they call fixed panels. However, there are increasing number of projects using tracking systems. The one on Route 27 down towards Belgrade is a tracking system. And it's a single-axis tracker so that the orientation of the mountain system is north-south. And the panels sit on top, and in the morning, they go towards the east. During midday, they're straight up, and in the evening, they're towards the west. And our project proposal included a combination of trackers and fixed panels. But I am seriously evaluating now the option of just using all tracking systems like that project in Augusta. The tracking system can become less expensive than they were. The energy production is quite a bit higher than Fitztown, it just makes more sense. It makes the greater use of the, of the land for production.
Steve, how high are the pedestal systems like you have on your property? How tall are those typically?
Uh, that, yeah, that's probably 20 feet off the ground, that big one, yeah.
Do you foresee any of those being utilized in some of these commercial?
Possibly, you know, a lot of towns, well, half the towns are above the 20 feet. Belfast has a 30-foot maximum, Naples 25-foot, Rockport 25-feet, Oakland 20-feet. And then there were a couple of others that didn't have height restrictions. So, you know, I don't see any harm in going to 25 feet to accommodate most any kind of technology that would be around, I think.
So is your understanding that even, let's say, getting one down Augusta?
Yeah.
Mine and stuff, and the ones over Route 3?
Yeah.
They're more than 10 feet tall?
I can't say for sure how tall they are, but I imagine they are.
I just, when I saw that, and you said, I think earlier, most of them are 12 or so.
Yeah.
And so I guess I just maybe didn't pay enough attention to the height. Because I was saying, oh, those things are about 8, 10 feet tall. Never envision them being 15 feet or something like that.
The ones in Augusta are pretty low, and the ones up in Farmington are very low. And I believe Farmington's a fixed panel.
Yeah.
And, yeah, they're not very tall. It would be even more intrusive if they were tall. And that's the reason why I keep them that low. We're not going to get eight feet of snow to cover them up. And when snow lands on the panels, it'll move on the panel regardless. So unless you have a panel that moves back and forth, then if you're a fixed panel, it doesn't matter if they're 10 feet or 15 feet. It's not going to get covered with snow anymore at 10 feet than it is at 15.
Well, what happens when you reduce the angle and the snow doesn't slide off nearly as well? That was the point I was trying to make, that a low angle, short installation, panels are flatter, the snow doesn't slide off nearly as well during the winter. That's the main fact that I can see. It also takes more land to put in a flatter panel for the given amount of pounds.
And then also there's more, more runoff on each panel, the steep areas as well. So when you have a, like, respect, whatever it is, steep and pitched higher, it's such a drought. You're already way over the, you're already way over the amount of roofs that we could ever put on that spot. So.
Yep.
Let's just drive the numbers up even further.
So Steve, I was curious, is there an average panel dimension that is used in industrial sort of circumstances? The reason why I ask that, I'm thinking about, if you've got a pedestal at, say, 10 or 12 feet, and at the very minimum, if you had a flat panel on top, if it's tilted at some amount of degrees, half of it would be above that 10 feet. And so I was just trying to think, like, what does that mean? How do we, how do we understand what that is?
Yeah, you're exactly right. You can't just look at the, at the structural part of the racking system. You have to look at, well, what's the, the 10 feet refers to the top of the panel at its maximum height. And so if it's tilted, it's going to be so many feet above the racking system. There are all sorts of configurations. However, the solar panel industry appears to be moving over the years towards increasing size panels to get more wattage on each panel. They've increased the efficiency of the, of the cells, but they've also improved the, all of the junctions and other, you know, wiring and parts, you know, interfaces in there so that the, the amount of power they can get out of each panel has gone up and up and up. Part of that is because the panels have gotten a little bigger as well. So that's the trend in, in the industry. You know, when we made the application, we gave the power project on 375-watt panels, which was pretty middle-of-the-road at that time. Now, I would envision going to ones that are like 475 watts, so a pretty big jump in wattage, which would reduce the amount of land and space required for a given amount of power production, which, you know, is a good thing in general, more efficient in terms of land use, but, yeah. But it'll all be the kinds of.
Thank you.
But the second point in the Reed Field ordinance is the maximum development of 20% of the lot. I don't know if you have noticed that in your ordinance, but I certainly did. That means 80% of parcel can't, you can't put, included, you can't include it in the footprint of the project. That's a, in my mind, a very onerous provision that will drive up relative cost of projects in Belgrade, which I think is important because, you know, this is a competitive situation. And I'm going to be submitting a bid in competition with projects from other companies around the Central Main Power Company service area. And if Belgrade's targeted with, you know, this kind of prohibition on developing 80% of the lot, then that's going to be a handicap right off the bat there in terms of, you know. My, that's bad. I also don't understand why it's really necessary. It seems arbitrary to me. The only, I talked to some person who worked at the DDP in the past, and he said, well, 20%, that's the amount of impervious land that you can put on a development for like a shopping mall and things like that. I think they use some kind of figure of 20% for the impervious area of, of a parcel. But that really isn't what we're talking about here, so.
And I would agree, when I was in the shoreline zoning, as far as lot coverage, if this were in a shoreline zone, we would say that the puddings or whatever for the just on the grass would still be able to grow on an acre. We would say that's not lot coverage.
Point C, 200-foot buffer requirements on all lot boundaries is another provision in the Reed Field ordinance. And, you know, I look, I point towards our, our, our site at 242 Manchester Road. We are surrounded on three sides, really, for most of the length of the boundary. We're surrounded by either wetlands that are not available or very steeply pitched land that is also not developed. And I think that kind of example points out why a blanket requirement for 200-foot buffers on all boundaries is not really a smart way to, to go. You're, once again, creating, you know, a set aside of more land that can't be developed. And if there's no, no need for a 200-foot setback on a boundary line that puts up on a, on a wetland, then why should it be required in the ordinance? So that's, I think these three here are critical. Fourth one is on prohibition on prime farmland. Reed Field is the only one, only town that we found in our research that has such a prohibition. And I point again to the 242 Manchester Road property. I hired a soil scientist to go and look at the soils there. And we do have, there's, there's one high area of about an acre and a half that contains soils that are prime farmland out of the 20-acre field that's there. Apparently, according to what the scientist told me, was that that, all that land used to be the bottom of a lake. And so sediment came, filtered down through the water in the lake and got deposited on the lake bottom. And then over geologic time, the lake drained and the lake bottom was left dry. And then erosion occurred that ate away at the lake bottom so that the only area that's prime farmland is this little bit that was left uneroded after the lake disappeared. So it just is an example of, you know, if there's an acre and a half of prime farmland on the 20-foot field, that site should be rejected, and I question that as well.
Steve, it's been a while since I've looked at the Reed Field ordinance. Their definition of prime farmland is that based on the guidance the state's come up with now for defining prime farm land that was released a year ago?
I imagine it is. I can't say for sure, but yeah, the state did have, make an effort for the Department of Agriculture to come up with more practical guidelines for determining what should be called prime farmland and what shouldn't. I think that's what you're referring to.
Yes, right, yeah, and it's based on a soil analysis.
That's right, yeah. So I imagine it does refer to that, but I'm not sure anymore.
I'm surprised there's an acre and a half of prime farmland in all of Belgrade, frankly. Otherwise, if we had more prime farmland, we might have more crop land in this town.
Exactly. You know, as I was saying, this lake bed was mostly eroded away, but there is a remnant there. It crops up in areas throughout that area that we're talking about.
Steve, I have a question. In terms of statement that kind of his means Atlantic prohibition would disallow with site. Suppose it was, was, the ordinance was adopted as it is. You're not given the idea that because there's an acre and a half of prime farmland that you couldn't develop the site? At least it's my thinking that that would just be a portion of the site that couldn't be used, that wouldn't wipe you off the map, so to speak, on the site.
Right.
I also understand the thought of an acre and a half of prime land, farmland, if we discontinued or weren't allowed to develop it. If it's sitting in the middle of your solar farm, you got an acre, acre and a half of prime farmland, but still can't do anything.
Right, right.
It's interesting, in the state guidelines, they actually have a provision for allowing up to 10% of the project to be on prime farmland.
We're right about at 10%.
Yeah.
And, and less than 10% because we're actually not going to develop all one and a half acres of prime farmland. It's going to sit outside the fence.
I mean, when I think about this, this issue, I don't really think about places like Belgrade. I think this is like the Sandy River, Louisville Plain there that part of the York Farm facility is being developed on. I mean, that's prime farmland.
That is, was currently used at this point.
Yeah, current use.
Recent memory, yeah.
You know, a lot of the upland fields are, you know, marginal soils, no doubt, and underutilized. But it kind of hurts my heart to see panels on top of some of that really fine corn fields.
That's all I have, you know. Appreciate the opportunity to present this information and stand ready to respond to any requests for information in the future, should you.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have a question.
Sure.
Steve, if I may, again, I'll need to go back to the Reed Field ordinance because it's been a couple of months at least since I've looked at it. Just as a way back, at one point in time, we were looking at that as a possible model ordinance to be sort of the foundation to build our own ordinance on, along with others. Right now, we're primarily working with, with KB Cogs developed for the town, which is not unsimilar to Oakland's, but the.
Excuse me, did you, what did you say about, it's not similar to Oakland's?
It, it, it's not unsimilar to Oakland's, but at least the decommissioning part.
Yeah.
From what I can tell quickly, there might be a few things in Oakland's that's not what KB Cogs suggested to us that we probably should look at. But anyway, that's all preface to this 200-foot buffer. That's all lot lines, not just from residential structures?
I believe it's all lot lines.
All right, thanks.
So what's your feeling of when decommissioning should be pushed forward?
When decommissioning should be enacted? Yeah.
What's your feeling on that? When should that happen?
Yeah, well, I agree with Oakland's language that if the, if the project hasn't produced power for a year, that the decommission process should be under stride. People should request a meeting with solar fields and say, well, we don't think you've been producing power for a while. Why not? Is there any likelihood that you will be producing power? And, you know, based on those discussions, if you decide that the facility should not be commissioned after the year of non-production.
So what would cause it not to produce power?
Yeah, well, that's kind of like, what's going to be the event, the true during event for decommissioning? The standard contracts for the power with Central Main Power Company are for a 20-year term. So at the end of that 20 years, a facility like the solar fields facility will have to try to negotiate a new contract. If it's unsuccessful at doing that because of newer, newer technologies that are much more efficient and that we can't compete, even if, even if we upgrade with more panels, that's a likely scenario that could trigger decommissioning. Sort of outmoded equipment that really can't be competitive more after the 20-year period.
So after that 20-year period, roughly, what percentage of those panels even work? Are they at a 10% level or are they at 20% level? Because they only have a 20, 25-year lifespan from what I've been reading. So are they just going to sit there lingering on?
Well.
And see where I'm going with this?
Yeah, the guarantee is for 80% after 25 years. And now most companies are going to 80% after 30 years. That means that they'll still be producing 80% of their power after 20 years. So, you know, if, if nothing else, solar fields and other, other developers could just sign contracts at lower prices because there would be no expense to upgrade and just continue producing a smaller amount of power at a lower price to be competitive. So that's the other kind of scenario that would play off against upgrading.
So if they can run at 80% in 30 years, then if we was to put a 20% limit on when they reached a 20% spot, then that really wouldn't hurt you guys, but you guys would be going on that one.
That's right. That, when I saw what you were talking about, that's exactly what I, what I thought. I said, I don't care if it's 10% or 30%. The project is viable and will be producing at a much higher level than, than those figures, or, or isn't.
So Steve, the upset of all that would be that a facility would be, reach its, sort of the threshold of not being economically viable long before. sort of the threshold of not being economically viable long before it ever reached the point of physically not being viable. In other words, not producing power. Because my understanding is those current technology, and this is from the US Department of Energy website. University of Michigan's Sustainability Institute. You know, on average, a panel loses about point three to point eight percent in productivity per year. So potentially it could last thirty, seventy-five to a hundred, over a hundred years. But, but that's not how the real world works.
I mean, it's potentially, I mean, I don't think anybody's run enough, you know, night day tests of, to cover more than fifty years probably. Yeah.
Then we end up having this discussion of, you know, I, I just, oh, I should take a step back. We're actually discussing, um, terminating or requiring decommission at the point of after twelve months of no sales. Rep of, uh, to the grid rather than lack of production.
Yeah.
That's what you guys are talking about. I'm not talking about that.
Okay, all right. Well, anyway, uh, that was part of this discussion we had with KB Cog.
I see.
And, um, the, uh, and is actually in draft language that we have at the moment. But that could still change. I, I don't know what your thoughts are on, you know, using the trigger.
Sales.
Sales versus production. Cause it, I mean, obviously they're producing electricity, even if they're not, the electricity isn't going into the grid. So I think that was the rationale. When is a facility effectively not operating?
Yeah. Well, if you base it on sales, that puts CMP into the equation, uh, which makes me a little nervous. The things they do are outside of our control. During the twenty year contract period, um, I'm not very worried about that. I don't think there's much difference between sales or generation. But afterwards, it could become a more fluid situation where mark, you know, it could become like a merchant plant that they could call it merchant plant, where you just sell into the grid when they want you to, when they want the power, you know, and, uh, work out a deal like that. So, um.
I mean, we're still talking twelve consecutive months.
Yeah.
Of lack of sales. Would, would that still be problematic as you see it? You know, I mean, would CMP be so old as to cut off a facility for twelve consecutive months?
Uh, I can't say, but, um, yeah. I don't really, well, maybe I could ask you a question. Why do you want to focus on generation rather than sales?
Well, I mean, as long as you have a contract, they could be sitting there and barely making any, making any power. And how, when do we, you know, when do we have a point of saying, all right, they're not worth being there?
Yeah. I guess I can't be much else. I, I don't really. I think, I think the major issue is, is going to be after the twenty year contract period is up. Because during the twenty years contract is in place, developers will do anything they can to maintain their sales and get the revenues that they expected from the project and take actions to repair and maintain, et cetera, the, you know, the equipment. But beyond that, if there is a more fluid situation like I was talking about, then, um, I guess. I guess I'd be more comfortable with generation and sales only in, in the fact that it kind of takes CMP out of the equation and just looks at the equipment, is it still able to generate power?
Steve, another question for you. Um, I would think that there's so much money invested in the basic infrastructure of one of these facilities. Not only the panels, but every, the rest of it.
Yeah.
How likely is it that rather, assuming contracts or, you know, you can get a second tier, a sec, a second contract for twenty years or something? Is it possible that some of these facilities would instead of decommissioning, want to just upgrade to the newer technology and panels and could they, you know?
Yes.
From an engineering perspective.
I think that's a very likely scenario. Uh, yes, uh, a lot of the panels now are manufactured so that they can accept, uh, you know, a couple of different sizes of panels. And they are set up for the size that is chosen for that project in a relatively simple way. So, uh, man, I, I really feel like, um, once a project starts into operation, that it's going to be there for a long time.
Yeah.
Even to upgrades.
Well, I, I kind of see it as any other kind of energy generating facility, whether it's natural gas, nuclear or whatever. You know, components, generators, transformers, whatever are replaced routinely.
Yeah.
And upgraded.
Yeah.
I don't know why this would be particularly different.
Now, in fact, there's less, there's no moving parts, you know, there are a few fans involved. But I mean, like a power generated station that pumps fans and water, steam, this is so much simpler. So the electric car versus the internal combustion car, similar situation.
Thanks. Any other questions? So just a time check for everybody. It's six forty, almost. And, um, so a few more minutes to go through the same overall topic. Um, just want to make sure we have some time to, for more discussions.
We have a few other items on the same subject in the topic.
Right. I did bring up the repeal ordinance. And then, um,
to hear his view on it or somebody else's view on it as well.
Yeah. I, I would, personally, I would like to hear from him. I'd like to have the opportunity to ask some questions. Based on your conversation with, um, some of the rationale that he gave you for some of their requirements doesn't compute with me. Uh, in fact, may have really serious unintended consequences, negative consequences of the twenty percent, for example.
Yeah, I asked if that, if that doesn't threaten possibly having a lot of smaller solar farms in the community. And so you become more populous. And Steve, I'm sure can speak to this, but he said what's really going to determine the number of solar farms in Maine is just what the interconnectivity that she talked about as to whether or not they can actually tie into the grid. And the grid is, uh, is limited in that regard. And that's going to be the limiting factor as far as how, how much solar development that we actually see in state. Is that, is that a fair assessment, Steve?
Well, I would say that, uh, it's going to limit the amount of the solar power developed in any one location or town.
Yes, correct.
The state as a whole, you know, they're working on the plans for upgrading various things, I think.
But he mentioned in this area.
By the town, yes, we're definitely limited by the availability of three phase power, which is not that much.
Yeah. And, and, and he said that in places like Refill and, and Belgrade, there's limited opportunity to, to plug in because the substation is already sort of maxed out.
Yeah, and the wiring, you know, it's expensive to run new three phase power lines to connect to, uh, the system. And so, you know, if you want to do that, it's much cheaper.
Would you, would you perceive that situation evolving over the years? Whereas, you know, maybe you see it builds up their substations to accommodate traditional power.
Yeah, in fact, the substation that we would be connecting to, which is down, uh, on Route twenty-seven down past the, the solar farm that's being built, it's near the, the Newish Hospital building on the right as you're going towards the highway. There's a substation down the belt. That was greatly upgraded in two thousand and fifteen. And without that upgrade, we wouldn't be able to connect to it. They extended three phase power out along Route twenty-seven to Hammond Lumber in the last five years. I recall the trucks being on Route twenty-seven, string of wires.
Yeah, definitely.
That was when that happened. And that's what we would connect to. So, uh, you know, as the, as the grid has improved or modernized, there'll be more opportunities. I think that's one of the big needs at this point for infrastructure in, in the state and the country to kind of build out the, uh, the system so that it could accept more renewable energy.
And the reason that hasn't already occurred is, like you said, just the expense of it.
Yeah, I mean, there's a certain amount of opposition from the utility industry.
Well, I mean, even if there were going to be some other type of, of power being delivered to, to the, to the grid. It's, like you said, expanding or developing the grid or modernizing grid is terribly expensive and stuff.
It is. And it's a fight about who will get to actually develop the power plants that will be attached to this new grid. And the interconnection with that was a billion dollar project to build a new transmission line fifty miles hook up with existing transmission lines for much of the rest. But, uh, those are the kinds of projects the utility industry would like to see happen because they would get to do it. Uh, in the case of solar energy development, uh, they're a lot less enthusiastic, I think, because they are not going to be developing solar powered projects in their own territories. Although there's an enormous wave of utility poaching where utilities will underwrite the development of solar power and wind power projects in Texas, like Eberdrola, like, or in, you know, in New Mexico. So they go trying to install these renewable energy projects in other utilities. It's kind of a competitive, you know, free for all giant companies there.
So how do you go from three phase, and they can bring three phase down through the village?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's starting from Hammond Lumber down through the village now. So how do you connect from one thirty-five? I would do that. Would they have to change three phase to back to, to our line?
Yeah, we would have to, um, re, rewire the, um, from Hammond Lumber up, uh, the Minot Hill Road. There's a line there that would be upgraded. And then from that corner where the old south church is, it would be upgraded along Route one thirty-five.
Now, it's Route eleven, three phase now too.
Route eleven, um, where, uh, where is that?
Green to Oakland.
Yes, that is, yeah.
So three phase has actually been upgraded quite a bit in the last few years.
Yeah, it's around here.
I didn't know that either.
Yeah, and that's a good thing from the perspective of the town, if you're, if we're ever going to build a public water system. Otherwise, it'd be much, a lot more expensive because you'd be bringing in three phase yourselves.
When they rebuilt that, um, substation down there, I believe, I'm not a hundred percent, but I believe if the substation in, in Fairfield Center has an issue and shuts out, we lose power. Or if there's an issue down Augusta and we lose power, it will automatically swap to the other lines is what I was under the impression of, about a hundred percent. I'm sure, but that's the question that I had.
There are two different three phase circuits, like you're saying, one from Oakland along eleven. I think that's the one that goes into the village. The one from Augusta goes to Hammond Lumber and maybe a little beyond. And I'm not sure. I think it stops right where Christie's is and the other one comes around and goes to the village. They might be able to, I don't know. That would make sense.
If it makes sense, then maybe it doesn't work that way. You know?
They have to make sure that the lower to
One more question for you, Rich. You said lawn's grass is growing underneath. It's not considered impervious. So why is our overhangs of our house?
Reason I was talking about. Oh, yeah, I, you, I'll let you finish. I thought, I, I heard your last phrase and
Yeah, so why is the overhangs of our house is considered square footage towards impervious? If what you're saying is true, then that's totally wrong.
I understand your point. And I have to go back and, because I know that
The roof's the roof. Doesn't matter if it's a ten or twelve roof on a solar panel or a roof of a house.
Yeah, it might be partly, and correct me if I'm wrong, Rich, is there's a difference in definition between impervious and unvegetated area.
Yeah, the, uh, twenty percent is unvegetated.
Unvegetated, not impervious.
But our, but our roof, our overhead is still coming towards it. So there's a thought.
The counts is, counts is, uh, let me see this. It counts as square footage in terms of the size of the structure.
Right, which is impervious.
Which is what?
Which is considered impervious or unvegetated.
Well, no, I'm not saying it's, it's impervious. If you've got soil with grass growing under it, but nobody's, you're not walking on it, you're not packing it down. Then that would not, I wouldn't consider that impervious.
But it certainly, go ahead.
No, I got you though.
It still counts as a square footage against us.
It does count as a square footage.
All the way around, that's a couple hundred square feet for those overhangs, which you're saying doesn't matter to a solar panel.
Well, we're counting that as square footage in terms of you're only allowed so many square feet of building within a hundred feet of the water and stuff like that. The overhangs and the decks would count. But
Even though it's vegetated underneath.
Well, if, if, I'm thinking that back there, if it's vegetated, we wouldn't count it as as, uh, toward the twenty percent. But it would count for square footage in terms of what you can have within a hundred feet of the water.
So, so the end of the Go ahead. I was going to just say, it, it sounds like we probably need to talk about this a little bit more. You know, and, and look at those definitions and stuff and make sure that that is answered because it sound like it's not right now. But I do want to make sure, we only have ten more minutes to, in this one hour to talk about some stuff. So if we could table that part and get back to it, then, then let's do that.
It just need to be clear to distinguish between shoreline zoning ordinance and the commercial development review ordinance.
Yeah.
Course development review ordinance has nothing about unvegetated area in it.
Yeah, and that, and that's a good, I think, thing to start with, right? Because what we're talking about in the shoreline zone, what, what you're referencing there is about
So we were just talking about, um, say a dollar giant general, want to go down there, lay four acres of pavement. That's good. Four acre lot.
That's, that's unvegetative. It's comp, it's impervious. It's both. But yeah, let's, we, we should, we didn't need to talk about this because as George said, there are two different ordinances. If we have a percent, percent lot or coverage in this ordinance, we, we either going to have to adopt the ordinance to be, to be consistent in the other ones or we create a new definition. But I think if we have a lot of, we're going to have to define what that is.
Yes.
In this ordinance.
Yeah. So we have just a little bit under ten minutes left. And so, so to cut, on the point about getting Mr. Clausen to maybe come in and speak, because that was the point of that memo, right? Is it possible we could get him to come in and?
I will ask him. He was, he was agreeable.
Okay, so, so if he could maybe visit with us on the sixth. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Everybody?
Yeah.
And then the next item on this topic has to do with this, the citing and other prohibitions. That, that's a three-page that we have, and yeah, do you want to?
You want me to run through that?
Sure, sure. Thank you very much for the work.
Yeah, so this is builds on the discussions we've had before about the premise that there are certain places in Belgrade that, that probably it's inappropriate to have solar energy facilities. And, um, and the first several paragraphs I lay out what the land area impact would be based on this discussion document that I drafted, and, and I actually have some changes I want to suggest. Had a chance to think about it over time, but, um, so the prohibitions that are outlined in this document would would limit solar development on forty-three percent of Belgrade's land area primarily in the rural district and in the general development district, as those are mapped by the comprehensive plan. And this is all based on the comprehensive plan, and it provided a link to that part of the comprehensive plan where those areas are described and defined. And actually, if we need to, maybe we could, well, we'll see if there's questions, but we might need to use the map, Anthony. The, so they, so what I'm suggesting is that there, and this is zoning, okay, let's be clear what we're doing here. This is, this is a type of zoning, and it has to be based very strictly on what's in the comprehensive plan as a consequence, as a legal matter. So we would prohibit in the shoreline zone. We would prohibit in the village district. Depot, Belgrade Lakes Village, the village district, North Belgrade. The Critical Resource Conservation Districts, which are inefficient wildlife lands, lands in various types of conservation protection. And the and then also the residential mixed-use district, which is five hundred feet from every public road. Primarily intended for a mixture, primarily of residential, but also some like commercial. And the idea was that is primarily to help avoid some of the conflicts that might occur. I think one thing that needs to be added to this, or I would suggest adding to it, is the Route twenty-seven corridor overlay district, which goes up and down the entire length of Route twenty-seven. And its goal is to keep Route twenty-seven looking somewhat attractive for the purpose of being inviting to tourists as they come into town. Other village businesses are, this is a big deal for them. And it, as it turns out, it might not have much effect because the, it coincides with the residential mixed-use district. But there's one exception that has to be put in there, otherwise we're essentially prohibiting solar in Belgrade, and that is on, on the second pit, well oh, I guess it's, I got it already in here. So there needs to be a, a, a means to allow the transmission line to go to the grid, and also for vehicle access to go through those two zones. Otherwise, you're cutting off all the rural district, which is the back acreage. So that, that's an important point. Because at that point, if we don't do that, if we don't include that, we, we're down to only allowing development on two percent of the land area in Belgrade, that's the general development or the industrial. And that's all owned by Hammond Lumber, Gagney, and the town of Belgrade. Town of Belgrade being the land row.
Is the Route twenty-seven overlay district also five hundred feet?
I think so.
Yeah. Good to know.
Yeah.
Basically, what that says is wherever those houses are rose there will be a solar farm with a five hundred feet of road. Is that what you're saying?
It's actually five hundred feet, regardless of whether a house is there today or not. It's five hundred feet from the public road. What's that?
Any public road?
Any public road. This isn't that, this is, that's a shoreline zoning.
Yep.
So So Craig, Andrew, you're saying all the ground is that limited residential mixed-use. And the only place it doesn't exist is what's been defined as village. General Development, Gagney, Hammond Lumber. I guess that's the DOT, town, San Sol. This is kind of landfill. This was an exception carved out for Hammond Lumber. I think it's a ground, but now, and then, and then what was two feet's lumber?
What you're saying is there has to be five hundred feet setback from any of those roads where there's mixed residential, or?
Well, if you exclude solar, a solar development, that's the net effect. But like you said, you have to provide access through that to the back acreage, because all the, this light green is the, the rural.
Just make sure we're talking the same thing, and you understand the same thing. It's it's not a high five hundred foot setback from that district, it's five hundred foot setback from the road.
Well, the district is five hundred feet from the road.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, setbacks are entirely different subjects.
But essentially, you don't get saying you can't be within five hundred feet of the road.
Yeah. But the reason I'm suggesting it isn't that, the reason I'm suggesting it is to avoid having solar arrays in amongst residential neighborhoods. So with the likely conflicts. And the dark greens are the conservationers. Some of them are large wetlands. Probably undevelopable anyway. So the, the rest, the other parts of this memo, I'd like to suggest that they're probably not appropriate in a set of citing prohibitions. So one point four, which is the prime farmland soils that we were talking about earlier, that relies on that Department of Agriculture Conservation and Forestry Technical Guidance Document. The various setbacks, setbacks, if you want to call them that, or areas that would be prohibited from unique wildlife habitats and wetlands and streams. I think, I don't think there's adequate basis in the comprehensive plan that I went back and looked at it a second and third time to justify those as a zoning ordinance, if you will. I think that's better moved into the performance standards that we develop.
Oh, yeah.
So what's better moved into?
So one point four through one point eight.
That's, that's
That would be my suggestion.
Recommendation.
To move it into what?
Well, like, performance standards, you know how in the body of the ordinance now, we have, you need to develop, develop a stormwater minor plan, and it's got to be like Dustin, so we would move this into well, it, it's sort of the appendancy that will have for shoreline zone, for, for, for solar farms. And we deal with this in more detail there.
I'm fine with that myself. I was going to raise the issue of, if you were gonna recommend it, because what we've got here is that I wanted to point out that one point seven for National Wetland Inventory, that includes virtually all wetlands, including forested wetlands that go down to a half an acre. I would have been a little concerned about keeping a solar farm from happening because there's three acres of forested wetland that generally pretty dry overall.
Yeah, well, then we could have that discussion and, and tailor it. I, I would just point out with the wetlands, though, we currently in the main body of the ordinance rely on the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service's National Wetlands Inventory now, but we don't have a setback.
Yeah.
So George, is there anything else you want to say? We had one raised hand.
Oh, yeah, Jeff.
Yeah, I have just a quick question. I'm not sure where you are in the process, but with these ordinances for rooftop solar or individual home type of solar panels in your area?
We're, we're hoping, or I'm hoping not to. I can't speak for the others.
I don't think anybody hears, thank you.
This is for commercial development.
Okay, thank you.
But hopefully that helps.
And then the last item, and I realize I'm rushing here, but is a prohibition that probably is meaningless, but in Maine and anywhere in northern latitudes, but that would be the appropriation on the development of thermal or hot water solar system, and just restricting it to photovoltaic. And the only reason I have that in there is when Steve's proposal came before this board, there was a lot of discussion about frying birds. Well, that is physically impossible to happen with a photovoltaic system, but but it does happen on a rare occasion with these other systems that are used in southern latitudes that take heat water, the gen, or steam to generate electric power that way. They use large mirrors and all kinds of other stuff. And if it made people feel better, it's sort of a feel-good requirement, I guess. I don't know how people feel about that. I, I did notice that in some other towns, they don't approach it this way, this transparent, but have essentially the same requirement that it's only photovoltaic panels that are allowed.
Thank you, George. We, we will need to talk about this more. One of the things is you were talking about showing on the comprehensive map the different areas. What I was thinking to be to help visualize what is left over, if we had an overlay to say, well, if you apply shoreline zone, village, critical resource, source conservation, residential mixed-use onto a map, so you could say, oh, take those off. Like, that's where it's not happening.
It's actually pretty easy to give a good statement, simply a layer of green and the red are the things that would
Be left.
come off. I mean
Right, and so just to help visualize that, that's all, so.
Yeah, so we're talking about prohibiting on fifty-six percent of land area and allowing on forty-three percent.
Yeah.
Even Hoyt Island under that proposal.
Right, not that that's going to happen, but
Well, we're still going to work on deciding part of this too, where, where, where so
Yeah.
due from lakes may also
Yeah.
become power issues.
Well, you, you know, I thought about that, Craig, and, and I think that's better put into the performance standards, how we deal with that, because I don't think there's, unless you can find something in the comprehensive plan, I don't think there's adequate language in there to say, okay, you know, the base of zoning requirement taken out of use, whatever percentage of land that would be because you can see it from a lake. Certainly, like other towns like Greenville have prohibited in the shoreline zone, for example.
So there may be a place for something like that. We're just talking about perhaps having a performance standard, but
Yeah, I, I think we definitely need to talk about that more and build on what we discussed last time. And I, I would just note that the tape, I'm not going to talk about it, but the table, that's the next piece of the packet where I summarize what other towns are doing with regard to how they address the visual impact. None of the towns that I could find, and I mostly focused on other lake communities, communities with a large second home industry, like Belgrade, and with hilly terrain like Belgrade requires much more than vegetative screening. The only ordinance that really deals with the visuals of commercial development in general, not just solar, but is Camden, and they do it by not allowing commercial development above an elevation of five hundred feet, and on slopes greater than twenty-five feet, twenty-five percent. Bill, where's the mountain? Camden Hills.
Yeah.
But it, it kind of, I, I didn't include Belfast and a few other towns that Steve mentioned earlier that have fossil or, versus, there aren't many towns that do have at all. Naples is the only other lake community that belonged to Greenville that does in Oakland. And and, and you'll notice that I also checked the ordinances to see if anybody else required decommissioning prior to full cessation of production or, or sales, and REFEIL is the only one I could find.
Yeah.
So we need to, we need to remember for decommissioning. Just can't say you're going to decommission it, but that never happens, and it needs to be amended one way or another. For decommissioning, I mean, we need to specify hot weather.
Right.
Decommissioning happens.
Yes.
Yes, most, most of the municipalities I looked at did it based on when production ceased. Yeah, that's it.
Steve?
Yeah, great, that's the triggering event. In an ordinance.
And
Triggering event for this decommission.
Yeah, and all of them, all of them, like the KV cog model after twelve consecutive months. And as long as it's not due to some natural catastrophe was before.
So it's ten after seven, I just wanted to make sure to do time checks, so thank you very much for this, and I think this would be prime for us to get back to this. Next, hopefully our next meeting will have, will have at least an hour, never know. And in some of these things more deeply, but a very thorough analysis, so thank you very much, George for that. Um, so at this point, I'd like to say, let's conclude, old business going to new business, and with that, thank you very, very much. Have a great, great day. Um, under new business, we have a shoreline application. This is applicant, this is Lake House Design Build. Owner is Michelle Davis. The location is two eight four Sandy Cove Road on Long Pond. Map twenty lot zero zero one. The purpose is to restructure the interior and make a new dormer in the loft space. New windows, interior work. This is a non-conforming structure on a non-conforming lot. Mr. Hudson, hello. Okay, and we did, I think we did get we got photos, right?
Yeah.
Get all kinds of photos.
Yeah.
One of the questions was the one of that site map as far as what is scaled out. And And I answered that into a recently. Two questions that can.
So from your, so Bill, this is from your email. So you said the two good, two questions where you provide answers, which are explainable. One, with photos on the twenty-foot height issue and two on the scale drawing issue.
Right.
At twenty feet per inch, it's hard to get with the rule, do not draw the site plan however I want to be accurate as possible. What I did was take the width of the lot, start from Rudy's border, and then take the building length at that point and whatever, whatever was left over, you plugged in that number. All, all other, all the, oh, maybe, to the lake, to cabin measurement, we're taking with two hundred fifty-foot tape measure.
So that question may have originated with me and and the gist of my question had to do with that on the site plan. The location of where the new proposed construction is. I scaled it out at fifty-five feet. But on the profile drawing, when you scale it out, it comes out with twenty-five and a half feet.
Okay.
So I assume the scale on this is wrong, but I don't know that for a fact. And that's just in my question. It it has a scale of one quarter inch equals one foot. I'm guessing it's supposed to be ten feet, but that's just me.
So with the fifty-five.
This is, this, at one inch equals forty feet, this. Right. And that makes sense since fifty-eight feet to the.
Yes.
So that's why I questioned the scale on this drawing.
Correct. This, like this right near, where originally when I showed it, it was scale that quarter inch.
Okay, so the, okay, so so the the distance. And this is the essential question and answer that we need to apply the ordinance to the, your proposal, is that it's fifty-five feet in front of the vertical expansion is fifty-five feet from Lloyd.
Yeah, it's past there.
Okay.
It's eighty feet to the back of the building.
Okay.
Yeah, we're coming at ten feet, so seventy feet where the where the start.
Okay, so it's eighty feet to the back.
Yep.
Oh, that's a good thing, too.
Yeah, that that's important to note, too.
And none of this dormer is, it's all over top of existing building?
It is.
Okay.
And there was a mistake made. I thought it was three bedroom, about three bedrooms. But when I looked at the subject plan, they had actually had it approved before.
Oh, okay.
They're not increasing anymore.
Okay. They're not increasing it either.
No. And we got the subject. I think it's a great idea.
Yep.
But it wasn't happening in the past, but.
Right. Because some of the old properties might be in need. Thank you. Thank you very much. Gotcha. Okidoks. Okay, what other questions do we have for the applicant or about what he's proposing?
The total house, total height from the ground up. Right, and I got that. Lowest part of that house? The ground cable? That is a lot.
Off the ground surface.
Yeah.
Right. Right, exactly. This is off the back of the house.
Is the back away from the water?
It is. This, this, this is the eighty-foot mark. Right here is eighty feet. And this is the the addition to the lake side. Lake side from over this one.
Yeah. Everybody have this?
No, no word.
Review this one.
We can share it as both, yeah, thanks.
This is for that.
Yeah, and this is an interesting one, too, because this building in the way of getting, right, isn't this building?
Yeah, that's existing building.
So, but the highest point is overbuilding, and we need to get the that elevation from the highest point to the ground.
That's right. So there's, if I go in the back, you can straight up it'll give you exactly where that pitch is.
Oh, I see. You've already done that. I was looking elsewhere. So you already got that taken care of on the far left-hand side of of your profile drawing.
Yeah.
I get it. You're step ahead of us.
So he, yeah, he squared this off.
Yeah, so you squ- yeah, no.
So.
So that's the lowest, that's where the land goes down, which is off the high part of where we have in the back.
Right.
So this is down here where you can't tell how much that drops, it drops always. So you're measuring from down here, from the ground down here, out from the lake side up.
Going on the lake side on the back of the building.
Yeah.
Right in the middle of the.
The ground's higher than that.
The ground is higher than that.
And maybe I'm just being dense about this, but I I'm like, I'm thinking like, like, I think what Craig's asking too, so so on the the ground elevation beneath the highest point. Why don't we say it another way? The highest point of the structure, if you went straight down from that to the ground. Straight down, right, like a plumb bob going down. What is the distance between that point on the ground and the highest point of the structure?
It's eighteen feet. But but when we, we add, that's why I went up to exactly where where we're twenty feet is, it's gonna be the start of the pitch off the roof. And it's going backwards.
Getting where you're going already, but height is measured from mean original grade on the downhill side of the structure to the top of the structure. Seems like you're not.
Okay, right. I assumed to me, and I'm going with seventy-foot mark instead of the eighty-foot mark. No, instead of the fifty-five foot mark. But it's not a fifty-five foot mark. That's where it starts. Right, no. Yes, that's downhill.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. Right now, it's. That's the highest point.
That's how that's measured, because I've never even done it before like that.
The, we're talking about the height. I can read the definition height of the structure. It's the vertical distance between the main original grade at the downhill side of the structure and the highest point of the structure, including chimney, steeples, and other type of things.
So the downhill side.
The downhill side.
The structure's one twenty feet tall. Five inches, twenty, twenty-eight inches plus. Now, before we start. On the building itself. So if we go right to the front of the building. But if you go to the back of the building, if you go to the eighty-foot mark. Like, that's the back of the building, then our, our roof pit starts at seventy feet. And I got a question on that, too. We've worked on the properties that are, we're talking like this. We're talking thirty feet, that's plus on the front of this thing. Because of the way the landscape, I mean, it's like floor, floor, p. One is like forty feet. I understand, but keeping, you know, keeping with that to go height. We're all willing to do.
Yeah.
In this case, it's all I need is a pitch higher from that front to get it go backwards.
Yeah.
And what we're doing is taking all that rainwater and building another, you know, profile, so it's catching all that, that's the smell and the rain comes and gets dumped off into two bits.
I want to make sure I understand what you said earlier. You said a, referring to this new drawing, you just gave us that the distance between the the land surface and the base of the camp is twenty-eight inches?
In the front of the building it is.
In the very front of the building?
In the very, very front.
Okay. Do you know what it is here at the same distance back from the lake as the high point of the roof line?
I, I wasn't considering that, but it drops off eighteen, good eighteen inches from the back of the building forward.
So, so if I'm, if I'm hearing you right, if you said this is eighteen inches, just say eighteen inches, that might be a maximum or something. So eighteen inches here, plus what's the height between the bottom of the building to the highest point of the structure right here?
Inside measurement is eighty inches, hundred and sixty inches, plus roof structure, plus wood structure.
So whatever that, what is that?
Four structures, eight inches, roof structure, six inches.
I just need the total. We just need the total. What we need, I think, unless I'm going on the wrong path here, we need to know what the elevation is here from the ground right there. Am I wrong?
Well, we, where the height is measured, because it's got a deck on the front, that's part of the structure, we've got to measure from the front edge of the deck.
Oh, right.
Oh, yes, we did that in some other.
This is all coming back.
Yeah, another, another memory. Okay. So, help it, can you guide us through that part?
Well, the definition says is from the main original grade on the downhill side of the structure. And the deck is part of the structure. It's not an accessory structure because it's attached to the building.
Okay.
So we've got to go from the downhill side of the structure, which is the front edge of the deck up to the height of the roof. Back. So take the height of the roof and draw a right angle down to the ground at the front of the deck. That's the height of the structure.
Yep, that's what we want to get to. So Bill, you.
Up to the deck?
Yep. Can, can you, can you show him just like with your, with the drawing, because we're talking about from the front of the decks on the lake, on the lakeside part of the deck?
Yeah.
Plumb bob up. Right angle over
Right.
to the tallest point.
Yeah.
And whatever that front measurement is, that's it.
From on top of the deck or to the ground?
To the ground in front of the deck.
Oh, boy. Step twenty-eight inches more than that. Fourteen foot eight inches.
Yes, yeah.
Maybe I want to use that or not.
Bill?
Yeah.
I want to show you. Yeah.
I know, I understand what you're talking about. I think, yeah, right from the peak, right down to the ground in the front of the structure, not the back.
Correct. Correct.
That is fourteen foot eight inches plus twenty-eight inches. No. Yeah, that's sort of sixteen, almost seventeen feet.
And seventeen feet is from where?
Seventeen feet, seven, seventeen foot is from the ground to the peak of the building.
We're gonna have a twenty from the backside of here.
Yes.
I'm going to twenty. I I put the back side, well, you know, I put the backside of the building on my scale, I scaled it to the backside of the building going up, because that's what I thought it was supposed to do. Yeah, so it can be twenty feet from in front of the deck to the peak. So as it is right now, if you draw that line straight across, it's twenty feet plus twenty-eight inches. So I said it's just a height right there. Yeah. No, no, twenty feet plus twenty-eight inches. No, you have to get a, take the picture off. I turned up there fourteen inches. There, I mean.
I'm not, I'm not clear on it. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm not following, yeah.
Well, it's obvious. I took.
Yeah.
Let's, let's make sure we're all talking the same game here.
Yes.
So the height and the maximum height is defined in the ordinance is this distance between the ground elevation at the lakeside of the structure, which is.
Structure of this is the structure.
Yeah, this is the deck, right?
Yep.
So it's that distance, A, plus the height or this height plus B, which is the, the height from the peak down to the base of the camp.
Right.
So what we're asking is what's A plus B? Because here, here it indicates this is twenty feet off the ground, off the, not the ground, but the, yeah, off the ground back here, but we don't know what is off the ground from this point.
This right here touches back there. There's a, I'll show you on the picture.
So the, the camp is at ground level.
Yeah.
It's below, let's, let's not get diverted by that, though, because that's almost irrelevant.
Right.
So we need to know this height.
I have that height, twenty inches.
Twenty-eight inches, and this is twenty feet. So is that what you were saying before? It's twenty feet plus twenty-eight inches?
Right, so that's a twenty-eight.
Right here.
Does the deck, is it sloping? Is there any more slope under the deck?
Yes, there is. It's twenty-eight inches.
Right.
Which is more than what's at fifty-five, at the front of the.
So we're essentially saying the building is twenty-eight inches taller than can be.
Right.
Right. Twenty feet plus twenty-eight inches.
Right.
We all on the same page?
Yeah, that, that was all I was trying to make sure we're.
This is, so this, this right here comes down from that, if I went from here, so this is the existing structure, right?
Right.
So that's what you wanted to figure out.
No, not the existing structure, what you're proposing.
Right.
Distance right here.
That's right.
So it sounds like we have this twenty, twenty feet plus this twenty-eight inches.
This is above twenty feet right here. If that's what you, if you go here, you've measured from here to here to here. It's tall and twenty feet.
Yeah, but that, that's irrelevant in terms of our decision, because we don't even regulate this.
Right.
All we regulate is what you're proposing to add on, and this maximum height can't exceed twenty feet above this point right there.
Well, so that means that this height of the roof has to come below this height of the roof. In order to have that happen, because this is higher than twenty feet, in order for me to make this come down to here. In order to have that happen, because this is higher than twenty feet, in order for me to make this come down to here? No, you can go to the, just.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's key.
It is key.
That's key, can't be, it, it's twenty feet or the height of the existing structure.
Whichever is greater. If the existing structure is twenty-two feet high, your addition can't be.
Yeah.
But, because of the pitch of the roof, it's going to look like it was an out of thought. Our job is to make it look like it's worn there, okay, so that's an issue. Because it's just going to look like it was just stuck there. And they're not paying me to, they're paying me to make it look great. And this is a hard one, look good. Anyway. So you're saying I have to stay with that or I can't go any higher?
Yeah, I, I mean, as Craig pointed out, really the relevant maximum height is the height of the existing structure. So you can't go any higher than that.
Right, that's understandable, but there's no, um, there's no like, this is, but the back of the building, okay, is being lower than that.
Right.
So there's no artistic liberty provided in, you know, in what we do. You know, I understand that rules are rules.
But we can only go by what our standards say. And it says you can't be higher than twenty feet, uh, we have no ability to waive standards or give variances. That would be through the Board of Appeals, and I don't think that you were there. Not, not. Something that very unlikely you're there.
Yeah. That's a lot of time, and I just want to get it. I want to work on projects, I got to figure out how to make the.
Mm-hmm.
How would the project, so now it will look like it's not so fun?
Right. So what, what page, let's see. Can we cite this, this part, part of the ordinance so Bill can understand where we're coming from on this?
No, I know exactly where you're coming from, except in the past, okay? I never thought that was the issue, I thought it was from the lowest part, which is, to me the lowest part was on the back. That's the lowest.
Yeah.
The top or the highest?
Low as part of the structure to the grounds, what you thought it was, or the basin to the ground, rather than the lower part.
Exactly.
Downhill side.
I thought we were like, it's like fluid.
We're looking for the highest, not the lowest.
Right.
Well.
You want, you want to.
Well, I just, you have to tell them they want to build this way to have that.
Right, so do you want to go back and revisit with the people what you're supposed to do?
No. We're just going to tell them, it, it was an issue that I told them.
Okay.
I'm hiding it. It's a, we're awful close to that. So. Didn't do anything as long as you don't increase the height, so. Uh, airbrushed footage, uh. But, so if you can design something that doesn't go any higher. You can still go. All right. We figured it out. We use the same peak and do a shed warmer on either side. Which is being a fish. And I need to drag the roof.
Mm-hmm.
And it won't look so bad.
Okay, so I. I, I like the idea, I think it's great, um, I just want to make sure I'm talking about this, um, very openly.
Yeah.
So what we have in front of us is one proposal. It sounds like we, after our conversation now, with the information that you now are considering about what we know. There are limits. Um, I'll just say it this way, what's in front of us would not, I'm going to say probably would not be allowed.
Because.
As is.
Because of the height.
Correct.
So if I write up a statement and it says, these are the issues that I learned at the board, and in order to correct those issues, I'm going to take the peak and leave it exactly where it is. Instead of using a flat structure to go backwards, I'm going to use a, uh, structure on either side to make a shed warmer either side.
Um, I don't want to speak for the board, I want to ask, because this is a departure from what's i- in front of us.
Yeah.
For minor edits such as, uh, maybe it's a square foot thing where a person says, oh, I've calculated incorrectly, I've come back and on page one of the application, they would sign and date and edit that, that's one thing, but with a different proposal, what do you think?
I think we should handle this the same way we handled its predecessor on Great Pond and Table. Allow you the time to come back with a new design, uh, that you submit to us, so that we can, we know what we're approving.
All right, go ahead and second that as well, uh, you know, you know, a lot of this already happened, you know, after we do a lot of.
Yeah, yeah.
We just have to give us a new design with the proper heights from the lakeside to the peak, even if it's twenty-two, twenty-four feet, whatever. Yeah. That's what we need. I can draw that in. And basically, that's all you're really going to change. I can draw that tomorrow, so the, yeah, the goal, well, we won't be able to see it again until next, maybe.
Yeah.
In two weeks.
Yeah, in two.
January.
So, yeah, so I want to say a couple of things, first of all, thank you for hearing what we have to say, it's sometimes difficult to get through this stuff. But thank you for that, and, and we'd like, I think what you're proposing will meet what, what the ordinance talks about easily, right? So I just want to make sure you understand, we can work with what's, what is submitted, but we, I am very hesitant and I would not want to try to act on an application that we know is not correct. Did that make sense?
One other question before we. May have missed the, it may have been answered already, but I, the, the addition itself.
Yeah.
Is that back seventy-five feet from the water?
Eighty feet from the, the back of the building?
Eighty feet from the water?
That's what I believe.
The, the back of the building is at eighty feet from the water? So some portion of it.
But the, some of the addition is, is within seventy-five.
Some portion of it is.
Because I, I was thinking if the addition was back at eighty feet from the water.
Right.
Then that might not be an issue, the, the whole issue we've been talking about may not be an issue.
Right.
If it's not back seventy-five feet, then where, where we talked about before, I said anything.
So you're limited with the seventy-five feet?
Yeah.
Okay.
Here, the only other issue that I see with this application, and it's not really a serious issue at all, is, um, dealing with stormwater runoff, but we can handle that through our usual condition of approval.
Yeah, yeah, good point, and, and so you've heard this before, right?
I just want Mr. Hudson to have everything out on the table, so. You know, let's come back one more time.
Right.
So this application says there's no addition. There's no square change, it's just dormant.
So you're, you're thinking maybe no additional stormwater?
No, I was just referring to what Rich said.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry.
There's no addition going on. It's just remodeling what's there.
Right, adding height.
It is an addition, though.
No, it's not an addition, additions when you add square footage.
Was you asking about what the appropriate maximum height was?
Yeah, I was only talking about the height.
Yeah.
This was an addition.
Yeah, 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 we got rid of the volume requirement.
Do you understand what we're saying, just redraw with height? Yeah. So. You know, two weeks from now.
January sixth is our next, yeah, meeting.
So.
Someone come in.
How do we table, do we just decide to table?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, uh, table, uh, pending. Design plans.
Okay, motion on the floor and second bid, any more discussion? No, and you know where we're coming from, right, I mean, this, you're going in the right direction, just want to make sure the elevation on the drawing and the, and thing is what we, we act on.
We're on it.
Okay, we want to make like a picture, you know what I'm saying? So, are we all set, all in favor of table, Craig, yes, uh, George?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
And I too am in favor for, in favor to table, uh, none opposed, we'll see you on the sixth. Okay, thank you, Bill, thanks for your patience. Okay, next up. So Jeff, thank you for patience.
Not a problem. Is there anyone to take a bio link for anything?
I'll ask, anybody, no, but I think everybody's been very patient as we get through, so thank you, thanks very much. So, uh, you're representing Paul and Kerry Dennis?
Yes.
Okay, so, and you, looks like you're looking for some, some feedback from.
Exactly, yeah.
No, go for it, it's fine.
Um, yeah, okay, just for the record, my name's Jeff Allen from A and Hudson, seeing you guys online.
Yeah, yeah.
This is the first time I've actually met you in person.
Sad statement, isn't it?
Yeah, well, we've seen this, I'm a long time. Um, yeah, Mr. and Mrs. Dennis bought, uh, this, uh, land, also with Mark Gonowitz, who's, uh.
Oh, hi, Mark. Good, thanks for your patience as we got through all this.
Working with, uh, the Dennis's to, to create something new. Uh, last September, they bought this property here, it's on, uh, Great Pond, uh, on the Sahagan Road. Right now, there are two camps on there, there's a three-bedroom camp up front here and a two-bedroom one in back. And roads are in back of here. They want to, uh, remove these two camps, this is also a, uh, I've got lines drawn across here, this is a seventy-five foot setback, a hundred foot setback, and a two-hundred-and-fifty foot setback. So all of this is within the shoreline zone. All the existing development, with the exception of the small shed from ninety-six, where it's just outside the shoreline zone. They're leaving that there, it's just a little tool shed. Um, what they're intending is, is to, they want to demolish these two camps and build another camp in their place. Right, in doing that, right now, we're about twenty-five feet to the shoreline here from the edge of the deck. Uh, in the back of the, the front existing camp, which is over the main tier, is about seventy-five feet from the water. So what they want to do now is, if they can demolish this one and this one, take that gross floor area that they had for those two buildings, which was a little over thirty-one hundred square feet, and make a new building. The new building is seen over here, will set back, so the front of the building is at least seventy-five feet back from the water. They, and then, this is just a placeholder as far as, that's, that's a thirty-one hundred square foot building there, to show what it would look like with these two areas combined. So it's, it's sort of in line with, with some of the other camps that are out there as far as size, the overall mass of the, the structure. But it's, it's going to be actually setting back from the neighbor here and the neighbor on the, on the east side as well. So what they're looking for is, is just guidance of, if they take out this and take out this, can they have that equivalent area to build a new camp? You know, in that process, they'll be making it more conforming, because it's moving twenty-five feet from the water back to at least seventy-five feet from the water. They, they, they really aren't able to move it back a whole lot further for a couple of reasons. There's a, an existing power line runs right here in front of this camp. And of course, uh, you have to have at least a fifteen-foot setback from a power line, uh, for building, just for safety and that's, that's a C and P standard. So that would be about fifteen feet here. It, it's, again, as I said, this existing structure is just, just a placeholder, some of it may be closer to that fifteen or to the, uh, power lines that, uh. You know, some may be, you know, where it is now. The, the other thing is, this is a three-bedroom unit. It's on the lakeside, this is an existing two-bedroom, so it's existing, uh, total of five bedrooms on the, on the property. This new property or new camp that they're going to build is going to be just four bedrooms. So it's actually a decrease in the demand for the septic system. There's an existing septic tank here, that's, that's right in back of where the new building is. That was tested, and that's, that's detailed on the report, and it's fine, uh, needed to be pumped there, I guess, before they, but they did that, and that, that's fine. The disposal field for this is off-site of the road, there's about a seven-hundred-foot pump that they put up to a septic's leach field, uh, way away from the lake. Well, green, purple land up there. So I guess really, as you said, what I'm looking for is just some guidance of does this sound reasonable? Um, or how could we improve that, of course, within, I've heard the previous gentleman who's in here before talking about heights limitations. Uh, and go, you know, be very mindful of that, I think it's, it's twenty feet if you're within seventy-five feet. And, or in twenty-five feet, or if you're within one hundred. Something like that is the, is the height limitation, that's twenty-five feet once you get beyond seventy-five. Okay, and so that, I, again, I don't know what the roof line's going to look like on this, they've got an architect that's going to draw this up.
We want to have a discussion with him about that maximum height.
Yeah, that's our, preliminary discussion, and, and I gave him a copy of the ordinance, is that.
Great.
Say, you know, this is what, and now I know that is from the ground level, that makes it very simple, because this is a very flat piece of land, so the variability from front to back is a couple inches maybe, you know.
Yeah. It's pretty obvious.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, yeah, we did have, um, groundwork and, uh. Need this.
Thanks. Thank you.
You can do great things with this building.
Yeah.
Yeah, I get a question.
Yes.
Oh. The. Going back to the other drawing, I guess. I want to make sure, one thing that absolutely can't happen is the, you can't, if you, if you tore down a camp that's one thousand square feet, or one thousand, whatever.
It's smaller on the back.
None of that, that, that area beyond seventy-five feet. Hold on a second here. Moving back.
And the front of the new camp will be at seventy-five.
Okay. And your new, your existing camp is two thousand something, so it's grandfathered it. Uh, I mean, you couldn't build a two thousand square foot building today.
Where that is.
Yeah, because it's limited to a thousand square feet within seventy-five feet.
So we're all beyond that two, that seventy-five feet.
What I mean?
We're all beyond that seventy-five.
Right, okay, um, but you're only allowed, well, here's, here's what I'm saying. I want to make sure that none of the square footage of the second camp, the one further back, under this new drawing, would be attributable to land that's less than a hundred feet from the water. Okay, in other words, do you get, a thousand square feet can't, you, you're making it more non-conforming if you add some of that thousand feet. a thousand square feet can't, you you're making it more non-conforming if you add some of that thousand feet.
Closer than one.
Yeah, because it's conforming here. I wanna make sure that it wouldn't be coming close.
Yeah.
So another way of putting that, I guess, would be that what's between the hundred foot line and the seventy-five foot line can't be any more than two thousand eighty-three square feet.
Yeah, yeah, that's that's.
And then beyond that hundred foot line, we can make a continuous building, continuous building, and could have up to another thousand and forty
Right.
square feet beyond the hundred foot line.
And there's, there's another way of looking at this, and I'm not sure I wanna actually go there. Is you could argue that you've got two structures. You tear the first one down, it has to move back to the greatest practical extent. You've got another structure that's conforming that we have, we'd have to look at first, the first building closer to the water, move that back to the greatest practical extent to fit that in there. Then you then figure out where you can put the second building or the square footage from the second building. But, you know, if you look at individual buildings, you can argue that that, that, uh, you could rebuild the first building one closest to the water back at the hundred foot line or closer to the hundred foot line than what is proposed here. And that's because he wants to put the other building toward the hundred foot, but, uh, you know, you said that's it's not, this, this isn't making it.
It's within the ordinance, it's fifteen hundred square feet, it's every five to a hundred, and the additions outside of that.
I mean, we need to be cognizant of the fact that we have the existing septic tank right behind where the the location.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, I mean, you can't go any far back any further than that realistically.
Yeah, okay, just, just make sure that the, uh.
So this, this, just, so I understand it completely. This area between, uh, seventy-five feet and one hundred feet can be no larger or has to be or can be no larger than two thousand eighty-three.
Correct, yeah.
And then the area beyond one hundred feet could be up to thousand forty plus whatever difference.
It actually could be larger than that. If you're, you're kind of entered by the septic system, but
Right.
The, uh, as long as you're beyond a hundred feet, uh, it doesn't really matter what size that second building was because that was conforming. And whatever you're putting on beyond a hundred feet is conforming.
Okay, so if if, as long as this is, we meet what the standard is between the seventy-five and a hundred, beyond the hundred, it's whatever.
Yeah, a lot covered.
What?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the lot coverage standard.
Yes.
Richard, you're saying that you go bigger than a three thousand outside the hundred? Uh, yes. As long as you say that.
Yeah.
Because a small building isn't in compliance with CMT's code right now. I had CMT out there looking like that.
Oh, yeah.
And that guy says, I don't like that. I mean, it's a hazard for the fire department.
Yeah, yeah. We actually had a case where we didn't really deal with the fifteen foot setback because we didn't think we had jurisdiction to do so, and they had to come back with a revised application because CMT wouldn't.
A lot of electoral.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's the only real issue I see is making sure that you don't put some of that square footage of the rear building within a hundred feet.
Yeah.
And it's fine.
And I, I think we, that's, that's
It's fine.
Yeah, as far as I understand, that would be acceptable for you.
It's mostly a matter of curiosity, but where do the, um, septic lines go from the septic tank and the pump station up into the leach field?
I don't.
You just, you can just.
Yeah.
Mark has been with the septic people out there, and so we could, uh, get a work around that.
Yeah.
You didn't, you didn't present in your package, packet here, any, uh, septic inspection, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I got two of them, and I was trying to figure out
Yeah.
why we had two.
Uh, yeah, I My pack, my package included the inspection break from the start. So I got confused going after sending an email saying there was another one waiting for us.
Well, it was different.
You guys have a copy on there? Would you like?
So you can just tell us.
Here's the camp.
So.
There's an old metal tank that replaced with a new tank, fifteen hundred gallons from a tank with a pump. And right up the road, quite a ways up the road, actually, Jeff said a seven hundred, but it's a thousand feet.
Really?
And that is.
They're pumping a thousand feet?
Yeah.
It's worked all these years.
I don't have the distance to the lake, but it's probably four or five hundred feet.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, it's.
Relatively.
Yeah, near the road. And slow velocities, you know, there's not a lot of velocity here.
Wow.
Right.
That's better.
That answer your question.
Yeah, thank you.
So your building with, you're in front of your building will be no higher than the original building or?
Wow.
Twenty-five feet.
Twenty-five feet.
Yeah, okay.
And outside of a hundred, what's the height limit?
Uh, thirty.
Outside a hundred still twenty-five.
Yep.
We had, we had that issue before, didn't we? We were going with thirty-five at one time. And we, I think I did thirty-five when I did the resource.
It's twenty-five.
Twenty-five, which is fine.
Right, that's page eleven in the.
Jeff, one more item. I just wanted to make sure I understood in your sort of the script, description of the project on this attachment exhibit C talks about removing and replacing the septic tank. But that's not the case, is it?
No, we, we had originally, I, before we got the, uh, the test done, we didn't know what condition was it was in. So if the test had come back, it was kind of marginal, before you put a new house on there, we wanna
Yeah.
put a new system in.
Right.
So.
So that's not necessary, no?
That is not necessary. I think we're not, at least at this point, I don't believe we're intending to do that.
Yeah.
Rich, you type with twenty percent lot coverage rule, that's for total lot, right?
It is a lot, total lot in the shoreline zone.
So, okay, in the shoreline zone, so if I look at the application correctly, um, the total lot within the shoreline zone is like three quarters of an acre. So whatever twenty percent of that is can't be exceeded. Right?
Unvegetated surface.
Right.
But do we say on the?
Yeah.
Unless it's, or can't exceed what's existent, right? It can't exceed the two buildings if it's over twenty percent.
Well, there's.
Right, right.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, you just, yeah.
They can go however large twenty percent is, but yeah, grandfathered for whatever those two buildings are.
Right, yeah.
And so yeah, we're still stuck at the twenty percent within this two hundred foot shoreline. And so we've got a road going through there, uh, that presumably would be grandfathered as well, right? Um, so we'll have, I mean, there'll probably be driveway, some walkways.
Yeah, make sense. All the regular stuff. One, three, five, six, zero, ten, point seven five. I did it quickly. No.
Drone.
Yeah, well, also, this was taken recently. So they, they brought down the lake some for winter, I take it. And so the white line you see here, probably is the shoreline.
Yeah.
And I, I would imagine in the summer, that's a little bit further in, more coincident with the, the property line being shown here. In the summer, in the water level, it's probably
He knows.
Calibrated eyeball here, Craig.
Yeah, yeah.
On the ground, are those docks or walkways in front of the?
That's, that's the dock. Yeah, in my, I, application, I took a couple pictures out on the dock, but it's out here.
Where do we measure from on the, uh, shoreline? The overall average? Pardon me, measuring the high water mark? Oh, it's the closest point of the water to the closest part of the structure based on what normal high water line is. If you've got a little indentation that comes in five feet, you've got to go in five.
Yeah. Which, and some sites can be tricky.
Yeah. Um, also, the one other thing I did wanna mention is, uh, right now, they're drawing water out of the lake. Uh, that's not a long term solution for, for the owners. They're gonna be putting in a well. The well, of course, will lead back over here somewhere. Has to be a certain distance. Well, it does not, it has to be a certain distance from the septic tank. But, uh, it's a greater distance from the leach field, which is up the road.
The tank is in fifty or fifty-five feet.
Yeah. I think it's fifty feet from it, but we have lots of room back here to do that.
True.
Find it almost hard to believe that, that they're still taking water out of the lake. I mean, I, I guess probably a lot of people do that, I guess. Uh, and as long as you're not drinking that, I guess you're fine.
Yes. It's, the camp that was, the camps that are there are nice, but they're, um, you know, they're not they're older.
Yeah.
They're, they're probably seven, I, I was in this one, uh, when I was old inside there. Probably seventies or eight vintage genology. Avocado.
You're probably missing mine.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you can always date.
Yeah, what color were the appliances?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The seventies, the only time they had avocado.
Yeah. That was, that was a big giveaway.
Our, our counter is the color of your shirt. It used to be bright orange, but it's faded.
All right, I, I think I'm all set, gentlemen.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
You're very welcome. Hope, hopefully this has been beneficial for you.
We've, um, this, I'll give this back now to the owners and the architect. They, they can have their way. And, uh, you know, I'll impress on the architect, the height limitations and how you guys interpret it.
Yeah. Do you have a general timeline that you're offering under?
Sprint that. Hit the architect all the time. Now we have a better idea what you can work with.
Yeah, right.
I would encourage, you know, that person to read the ordinance that would go by because you're not making the stuff up. You just go to the page.
Yeah, I gave them a copy.
Yeah.
So how do we leave this? We have to come in with a final house plan.
Yeah, a plan, you know, um. Yep, exactly.
Peter, do we need to table us so they don't have to pay the application fee again?
Oh, if you, yes. I think that's a good idea because you've already submitted the application fee.
Yeah.
Um, okay, I would think.
So I make a motion to table pending, uh, accepting a receipt of a final application.
Okay.
You need to complete the plan.
What?
You just have a footprint.
Well, we'll need, we'll, and we'll need the profile view too.
Plans and elevation, or a footprint and an elevation.
Right.
Exterior.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
I wonder what you need to write again.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Craig, thanks, thanks for seconding it. Any more discussion on this? So all those in favor of tabling? So Craig, yes, George?
Yes.
Rich? Yeah, and Pete says yes too, so for the favor, we're tabling until we hear back from you. And you know what we're looking for, right? You know what we're expecting? Right in there. Yeah. We try.
Sometimes, but, you know, sometimes it's easier to ask questions than to try to discern your intent in the book because
Yeah.
some of that's confusing.
Well, if you follow our discussions, you realize it isn't just on that side of the table that where the confusion lies.
Right. Can be easily unseen.
Um, Al's doing pretty well.
Oh, yeah.
He's, uh, still at home, he's home from the hospital now and he's cooperating at home. Al Hudson, my, our, uh, owner, previous owner, had, uh, COVID. And he has some lung issues. And he's still having some breathing difficulties and.
And he struggled with, he fought against cancer prior to that, right?
Right, and he has some fibrosis in his lungs too.
Makes him very challenging.
So Al, Al's not part of the firm at all in any?
He still comes in, well, when he was able to, he still came in, but he recently sold the business to Ben Murray.
Oh, okay, because Ben was here a while ago.
Yeah.
He was.
Yeah, Ben is the new owner, uh, and I'm just another blows all the bus.
Hopefully not on the windshield.
No.
Please give Al our best.
I will.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, gentlemen. Have a very nice night. Thanks. We'll see you.
Yeah.
Sometime.
Drive carefully in that fog.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It will be soupy up there.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is. All right, thanks.
See you later.
See you later. Thanks, you. So for tonight's business, we didn't sign any applications, so we tabled, we tabled two.
We didn't do a blessed thing, actually, tonight, when it comes right down to it.
Well, ho- hopefully we made some things clear. So, um, so I don't have any other new town business to go.
Minutes, don't they?
Oh. Yeah.
Are we still live?
Yes.
Uh, yes, sir, we are, yeah, yeah, hang on please, at the end of the package, I think.
Careful what you say.
Can we stay another hour? My wife's gonna think that I've been, uh, going out on the town. Last two meetings, I got home, uh, an hour earlier than usual.
Standby, yeah. I did the.
December second? That's what was at the end of mine.
Yes, yes.
Look, I haven't.
There's a part of your packet.
It was at the very, very end, plus two pages.
Yeah, can't figure out.
Yeah, we do, I do have, thank you very much. So Craig, did you see yours? And you know where mine was, was actually folded in the.
Oh, in the site drawing, yeah, that. What kinds of surprises in there for you?
I wish there was some chocolates.
And Christmas cards in there.
Yeah. Yeah, you're into it, yeah. All right, thank you. Let's take a minute to go through those. You had a medical, any questions? Right. I was thinking the same thing. Okay, so, so any edits to suggest to the minutes?
Except other than, uh, I think the, uh, last sentence in section one B, I think it's supposed to be H O Y E, but that's pretty minor.
Some of the.
Honing in and there's it. Last, last line.
Of the.
One B two.
Oh, one B two.
Be. Two. Oh. I see, yeah, that's fun. Yeah, fun.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
That, that's minor.
Yeah, hone in rather than. Okay. Yeah, hone in rather than, okay, gotcha. All right, thank you. Anything else, Rich?
No.
So George, do you have any?
A few things, uh, they're ranging from the minor to maybe a little bit more substantive. In the first line, uh, this meeting was conducted in person. At the end, it can be viewed at, and then there's no, the link is missing.
Yeah.
Um, I think she puts that down later on.
Maybe, I'm not sure. That's fine. The, in one A. See, one, two, three, fourth line down. Starts actually in the third line, Anthony Wilson, the last town attorney to find Horizon Year, and the executive summary completed by Charles from K D Cod will be used. Uh, I think what needs to be added there is how it's gonna be used in, um, in the presentation to the select board.
Correct, that is correct.
Then, uh, in one B, two or the, after two, in the bold, second line, ordinance and other avenues, period. It seems like we need to add something there that deals with that, that addresses the fact that Anthony would be approaching Reed Field, um, and because that got missed, and so something like Anthony will attempt to learn the basis for the refill ordinance decommissioning requirement.
Very good.
And then on the second page, paragraph B, the second line, which is bolded, by suggestion of Rich Baker and George Seal, change wording to board. And I would suggest a and after that, and decided to change to seven acres. Because they're two separate subjects.
Okay. So where's the and go?
So after the word board, there's also another parentheses needed there for board. So we read, by suggestion of Rich Baker and George Seal, change wording to board, and I guess, and decided to change to seven acres. Actually, we don't need the second parentheses.
Quotes?
Yeah, quote, after board, is at the end of the sentence.
Right.
Because that was all in terms of what changes we were discussing.
So and will be a new, with capital A?
No, no, it would be part of the same sentence.
Okay.
Board, and decided to change to seven acres.
So don't worry, don't we need to move the parentheses to board?
Well, there's there's a quotation mark at the end on the next line after acres.
So it's.
I, I assume really citing from the specific language that was in the November eighteenth planning board minutes. I'm not sure which is the bottom line, where the quotation marks go.
But that, that's what we're seeing. So.
I don't know why, babbling on about it.
Thank you very much, any, any other edits? Okay, okay, I don't have any other ones, so I would take a motion to, for these minutes.
I can make a motion that we could shut the minutes as amended.
Great.
One second.
And second, any more discussion? All those in favor, Craig?
Yes.
Yes, George?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Yes, I too, yes, four in favor, none opposed. Then I do wanna make sure we get back to Craig's question about what is the standard for medical marijuana growth facilities in Doug Gray. I think just making sure we're all clear about that would be good.
Yeah.
I know that Anthony, you send that, or we, you had one point kind of forgotten what to ask Anthony.
Yeah.
And somehow I got an email and I said, Anthony, I think it was, I think it was, you were supposed to talk to Anthony about that marijuana.
Yeah, that's what it was, and, and somebody prompted me, it was George or you, Craig, somebody remembered what it was, I couldn't remember.
The, it just so happens, Miragogo, I don't know if you got, I think she had got a phone call about medical marijuana facility as well, and I don't know if the same or.
Well, someone asked me about it.
Okay, because, well, it's probably the same then, but, and apparently nobody was around the town office, so she called me, you know, you know, best my knowledge, for recreational, we had to opt in, but we never did in the town, so that's still, that's still prohibited, medical marijuana, that was not the case, and.
That's my.
And the only thing I said was, it probably, it may or it may not, but it may require approval under the, um, the commercial development review ordinance.
Right.
And that's what I thought we were at back six months ago or something.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Um, I, I did think of one piece of town business to, to share, so, um, so the, you probably saw the email that, that said that the, the CEO candidates for that round, that did not work out.
Oh, no.
Okay, maybe we're just. Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's one of the, that's the.
And maybe that email just went to the interview panel, because I was on the interview panel for that. And so, um, after much trying to make something work, it didn't work out, and then Anthony has since contacted two other candidates, and we're trying to schedule interviews, so it's not, it's not, it's taking a little bit longer than I had hoped, you know, obviously, but we are trying to work in that direction, so we're trying to get there. So, so maybe next week we'll have one or two interviews.
That's good, uh, it's good that you're involved in it. Is what we do is just works of fiction without it being.
Exactly.
Meaning anything in the real world, yeah, yeah.
That's for the authority.
Okay.
And that was it for town business, so. I, I think we, I think so, so. Does anybody wanna make that motion?
I will, I make a motion to adjourn until our next meeting.
Okay, and second, any more discussion, all in favor? Yes, yes, everybody's in favor, I'm in favor, so we're adjourning, that's it, let me close or stop the recording, and we'll go like.